Welcome and good evening. We are calling to order the School Board of Manatee County Regular Board Meeting for May 28, 2024. We will start with our reading of the district vision and then the invocation. Board member Tatum?
Sure. Reading of the district's vision. The school district of Manatee County will be an exemplary student-focused school system that develops lifelong learners to be globally competitive. And I have Pastor Ralph Hohn. He is from the Source Church up in Parish, Florida, and he will be doing the invocation today.
Awesome. If you all please stand.
Thank you. Let's pray. Father, thank you for these, this incredible board, Lord. Thank you for their lives, their families. Lord, I ask that you bless them. And Lord, as decisions are made today, I pray that you'd give them a spirit of wisdom, of revelation, knowledge, and understanding. Father, they would make decisions that are fair, the decisions that bring life to Manatee County. I thank you for them, and I ask that you just bless each person that's here today as well. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, regurgitating, and just for all. May we see them? All right, so moving right along to item number five, approval of the agenda. The chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under Agenda Amendments on January 30th.
Submit.
And we are ready for granicus. And it passes five to zero. Approval of the minutes. Superintendent Weisong.
Thank you, Chairman, and good evening, board members. I recommend approval of the minutes from the school board workshop dated April 26, 2024, and the school board meeting dated May 14, 2024.
So moved. One second.
We have a motion in a second. Any corrections on minutes? Board members seeing none? Go ahead and vote on the approval of the minutes. And that passes five to zero. Item number seven, recognitions. Mr. Barber, come on up.
Always the best part.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Board Members and Superintendent Weisong. I know you all are fully aware that Friday was the last day of school for students because I saw you all at 5:30 in the morning at the bus depot. And I know you all had a very busy day after that. But today is the last day for our teachers. And so it's very special that we have a recognition for one of our stellar instructors. And so I just think it's a great way to cap off this school year and especially the last day for our teachers. So to get us started on this, I'd like to introduce Dr. Paul Ganzmer, the Executive Director of Adult Career and Technical Education.
Thank you, Mike. School Board Chair Choate, school board members, Dr. Weisong and staff. Thank you for having us here tonight for this recognition. Again, I'm Paul Ganzmer. I'm the Executive Director with Adult Career and Technical Education. Tonight, we also have Mr. Justin Erickson, Assistant Director for MTC, and our star of the night, Mr. Freddie Fowler. So I'll give you a little bit of background here. Since 1954, the nonprofit American Boat and Yacht Council, also known as ABYC, has developed safety standards for boat design, construction, equipment, repair, and maintenance, the essential global source of marine industry technician information. ABYC's product safety standards, credentialing, education, training, and other tools help members make boating safer. The ABYC Foundation supports the mission of the American Boat and Yacht Council with a focus on workforce development and providing resources that create educational and lifelong career opportunities to both current and aspiring marine service technicians. On March 27, 2024, the ABYC Foundation named Freddie Fowler from Manatee Technical College in Bradenton, Florida as the 2023 Educator of the Year. The annual award honors extraordinary marine service technology instructors teaching in high school and post-secondary. Mr. Fowler is a retired Master Sergeant of the United States Marine Corps. He's transitioned from a distinguished military career to the marine industry where he now serves as the Marine Service Technology Instructor at Manatee Technical College. Sarah Devlin, who's the Accreditation Director for ABYC's Foundation, oversees the marine and trades accreditation program. She said, "Manatee Technical College serves as an exemplary model", showcasing a program that successfully aligns with curriculum, with job opportunities at the local, state, and national levels. She also said that Freddie's repeated nomination by both students and administration highlights the remarkable influence of his teaching. Freddie is just one of our instructors at MTC. A lot of our instructors come from industry to actually teach and pass on what they learned in the industry. Not a lot of them went for college degrees to learn how to be a teacher, but they are masters in their trade. He is the expert in the field. So what I'd like to do is invite Mr. Erickson to come up and share some of the great things that Freddie does at the school. Mr. Erickson?
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. It's been an honor working alongside Freddie Fowler as he has stepped in and focused on a change of excellence for this program since day one he's joined our team. He's changing nationwide the way that marine service technology instruction is being delivered. I don't know if he thinks about that on a daily impact that he has within our local support network here in Manatee County by implementing high-wage credentialing into this program. So since he's come on board, we've reestablished partnerships with Yamaha, Mercury, American Boat and Yacht Council, the National Marine Electronics Association. And these are all high-wage credentials that our students are earning and going out into the workforce and not just being engine mechanics. They're elevating their success just by earning these credentials and really having a direct impact on our workforce here. But then outside of that, we have other program schools, brands coming in and evaluating and looking at the way that these gentlemen are teaching and delivering instruction in this program. So the recognition is well-deserved. Hopefully, there's many more to come. Sarah Devlin was actually at our program last week, participating in our advisory council. But part of that is the program is also up for the MTAP accreditation, which is the highest accreditation that the American Boat and Yacht Council offers to schools around the country. So hopefully, we'll see the success of that here in the coming weeks. So Freddie?
Yeah, thank you. So Mr. Erickson, make sure, he does, he writes my performance eval, so make sure all that points on my. Thank you for the recognition and thank you for being here. It's an honor to be educator here for American Boat and Yacht Council. It's really a direction of the course. It's a reflection of the course, and really, I hope it pays back to the course because really, it's about making the course a better place. Because like, we tell everybody, this isn't my course. This is our industry's course. It's our students' course. And what we put out in the industry is just going to make the marine industry just a much greater place. And it starts at our level. So, and that's, that's what I like. And that's what we aim for and we aim to achieve. So he talked a little bit about MTAP and all the recognition that we received. I think, I think it's all great, but I'll tell you, like I tell everybody, we're only 25% of the way there. There's still a long way to go, and we're going to get there. So, and it's just with, you know, hard pounding groundwork and with the belief and the support of all of you and the support of our students and our administrative staff, because we couldn't have done it without them. And my fellow instructor, he really is my right arm. We worked together very well, and we made the course a better place. And we're going to continue to go forward. So I appreciate the recognition and thank you. So. Mr. Fowler, we congratulate you on your award, and we thank you for all you do here at MTC and in Manatee County. That's all we have for tonight. Any questions or any comments for Mr. Fowler?
I have a comment. Sergeant Fowler.
Oh, yes.
Semper Fi.
Semper Fi, or?
That's right. National Sergeant Fowler, Semper Fi. There you go. That's all I got.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you for your service.
You threw me off there for many, so sorry. Been talking for a very long time, would appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for your service, thank you for what you do at MTC. If I knew you were a Chiefs fan, I brought you a Dolphins.
I was gonna say, go Chiefs, you know, that's my hometown.
Yeah, and this is just an example of how we can cultivate our own student base here into that industry. You can do it here locally, and I'm sure it's recognized, as you said. And I want to thank you for your service and the service that you are giving us at MTC. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you for your support of adult career and technical education.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right, moving on to item number eight, public comments. I do not believe we have any public comments. So moving on to item number nine, reports and presentations. Mr. Jensen, you're up twice. So take it away.
I'll be up for this first one, and then Ms. Allison Nichols will actually be taking the hesitation on the ARX STEM initiative. Good evening, Chair Choate, board members, Superintendent Weisong. I'm here tonight to present the first look into our progress monitoring three and, and of course, assessment results. These are hot off the press. So as you know, in August and September of 2023, our students and schools participated in PM1, which is kind of our baseline progress monitor for the year that shows us where we're starting. In December and January, we take progress monitor two, which is kind of our midpoint. And this, in May, our students take the PM3 and end-of-year assessments, and that's kind of the finish line for us, where we ended up and kind of tell us the story of the year. So as you know and have seen in other presentations, our students who are taking the FAST in third through 10th grade are taking FAST ELA, FAST mathematics. And as you'll see later in the presentation, a series of end-of-course assessments as well. Today, you're actually also going to get to see K through two data in prior versions of the assessment results. We've only ever gotten Manatee's data back, so we, we, it was basically just numbers to us. We didn't know how we placed relative to our peers around the state. Now, we're actually receiving state comparison data, K through two. So we'll be able to share that with you as well and helps give some context and show how we're doing in those grade levels as well. And additionally, we'll see some end-of-course data that you haven't seen throughout the year as well because some of our end-of-course exams, like biology and algebra, those don't have progress monitors throughout the year. There's only the one end-of-course assessment. So you'll see some of that data today as well. And just as a reminder, all of this feeds into the school and district grade components. What we're really looking at today is this, this hot-off-the-press baseline data. It's going to really be touching those achievement buckets in that top row. So your third-grade reading achievement, reading achievement, math achievement, science achievement, and then down one from there, social studies achievement. Learning gains calculations will come out later, and that's how our students individually grew from last year to this year. But none of that is released from this date yet, and we'll talk about that. Some key considerations for this end-of-year data. Like I said, Mr. McCarthy and his team have been working overtime compiling this. Our students and schools really just completed this in the last week or so. And so they've been putting this together for this first look at the data. But there's some key considerations in looking at it. First, makeup testing continues around the state. So the statewide testing windows run through May 31st. And so some of the percentages you see here will deviate by a percentage or two, potentially depending on how many students are doing makeup exams, et cetera, and when districts did their testing windows and when we pulled the data to compile this presentation for you. And then the official reports showing our school and district results, those will be released by the end of June. And so that state official data report we'll, we'll receive in about a month. A really key consideration is that these results will not match the data used for school and district grades. The reason for that is what you're going to see is the total number of students in Manatee County that took these assessments. But when the state is looking at calculating school and district grades, they're filtering the data by a few different criteria. The first is that they use a survey two-three match. That means a student was here both during the fall survey window and during the spring survey window. So students that were in the district, you know, both surveys. We, the state does not include ESOL students for achievement who've been in the United States fewer than two years. And so some of those students are removed from the achievement calculations. And then there's also, you know, scores, scores potentially being walked back from alternative and contracted sites to home zone schools and some other things like that. And so we have to, the state does all of that as part of the calculations of school grades. And so we're seeing the raw data of every student who took these tests. But when it comes to school grade calculations, these will influence the school grade calculations, which will change the number of students factoring into those components. And of course, we have yet to receive the Florida Alternative Assessment Results, and those won't be available till much, much later again.
Mr. Jensen, just so I understand something correctly, under sub-bullet two, sub-bullet two, where it says, FLDOE does not include ESOL students who have been in the US fewer than two years in the achievement components. What I think I heard you say is that those student scores will show up in the raw data, which I think is going to be on the next page, but will not be used to calculate overall school grades and school system.
And could be used to calculate learning gains, but not the achievement?
Not the achievement.
Right, not the proficiency scores that we'll be talking about?
Okay, great. That are then used for an overall school grade calculation and an overall school system calculation?
Correct.
Okay, great.
So those students may be removed from that?
Got it.
And not count towards us? Yes?
Great, thank you.
Are charter schools included in here?
Yes, so when we're looking at the, the school, when we look at the total school district results, that includes everyone, including our charter schools.
Have we done the calculations of traditional public versus charter schools?
Evan is currently working on that right now.
I hope he's upstairs.
He is, so he's working on that. We'll have, like we, like we always do for you, we'll have schools broken out by school by grade, and we'll have the charters broken out for you as well. So you'll be able to see all of that broken apart. He's been frantically working on putting all this together for us.
Thank you.
And our principals. He gets many, many calls from our principals throughout the course of his, of the state testing weeks.
Mr. Perry had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Perry.
Okay, that's all right. Same bullet, second bullet, third one down, walks back students from alternative and contracted sites. Can you give me an example of what an alternative is? Or a, and contracted are sites that we use that are contracted? So they take all of those scores out?
They don't come out. They go back to the student's zone school. And so like, if a student is at, let's say, Just for Girls, that data actually walks back to the student's zone school.
They're zoned school?
Correct.
Okay. And then it says also home zoned. Is that what you're referring to?
Correct.
Hot, okay, all right. It's not home school students, it's home zoned?
Yes, what, what school year is zoned for?
Okay.
And is that, I mean, well, I just think it's kind of ludicrous, to be quite honest with you, that a child's score goes back to a school that never even really had them.
Right.
Going back to home zone school instead of being at the contract, you know what I mean? But whatever, we don't have to discuss. That's an open-up a can of worms.
And Evan can, if you'd like, Evan can kind of share which sites.
Yeah, yeah.
Walk back and all those different pieces.
For a child who'd never stepped into Bashaw Elementary, but that's where they're zoned, and they've been at XY, you know, another contracted school, and, and now you're going to be, your grade is predicated on, you know, that's going to be added in. You never ever had a chance to work with that student, but it's okay. I know that's not you're doing, you're are doing, so.
There's a lot of complexities to the way school grades are calculated.
Yeah, that, that is huge, actually.
So like I said, this is actually the first time we get to see our K through two data in context because we're now receiving the state comparison scores. This is our ELA, which is assessed through the STAR platform for K through two. So you see K1 and two there. You see kind of our current performance levels on PM3 as well as the percentage of students who scored a level three or higher. And then you also see the state and district scores from 2023 and the state and district scores from 2024. And I think the story of this slide is strong performance in early literacy, us closing or making up the gap with the state in early literacy. And I think a lot of the intentionality in our schools and our district leadership and our school leadership and our teaching every day in the classroom and that intentional focus on early learning paying dividends, you can see particularly in, in first grade and kindergarten, a pretty significant gap with the state closing this year. So good results all around for K through two on, on STAR.
Yep, Ms. Messager?
I just had a question. It says at the bottom that kindergarten proficiency data is combined, and there's two different assessments. There's a STAR early literacy, and then there's a STAR reading for PM3. And so there, this data is combined. Do, do some students only take one or the other? Or do all the kindergarten students take both for PM3? Or how does that work?
So the way it works is the early literacy exam basically says, like, this is the appropriate exam to take until you've reached a certain level of performance, until you're proficient to a certain degree. And then we recommend you take the, the reading exam. And so a student could be taking the early literacy exam for all of kindergarten, whereas their peers who are maybe growing faster in reading at an early age might have moved on to the reading exam. And I can look back over my shoulder at Allison so she can nod at me and let me know if this information's correct. And so you end up with a mix of students by the end of their kindergarten year taking which exam. But by the time they're in first grade and at the end of their first grade year, every student is expected to be on the STAR reading exam and taking the STAR reading exam.
Okay. So the STAR reading exam is based off of kindergarten standards? Or first grade standards? I'm just trying to understand.
You can come up for the mic.
Like you're, we're giving it to the kindergartners for PM3 because they're high enough in early literacy?
The STAR early literacy is really pre-K kindergarten skills. And then when the kindergarten students hit a certain scale score, I believe it's 850, that's set by the state, then that's the indication to schools that they can then also move into that STAR reading assessment. And then the, so that early literacy one really focuses on those foundational skills like letter names, letter sounds, some phonological awareness, vocabulary, there's some comprehension. And then when they shift into STAR reading, it shifts those skills where it focuses more on the, the standards and the comprehension side. So they still have a little bit of phonics and word analysis on STAR reading, but the emphasis of that test then shifts more to kind of what probably you'd think of as a traditional test with like a reading passage and answering questions around standards.
Okay. Is that based on kindergarten standards?
Yeah, it's, yeah, so it's, so the test is adaptive, right? So they start at a certain level, and the test adapts based on how they answer the questions.
Is it the same test they're going to take in first grade?
Yes, but again, adaptive, right? So they might not always be presented with the same questions, the same passages. It's, it's, yes, it adapts up and down based on the grade level and based on how they answer.
Okay. Thanks.
But yes, all based in the standards around kindergarten, first, second grade. And I believe the test starts them at their grade level and then works up and down from there.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have another question, if you could.
Yeah, go ahead.
It says on the second bullet, first and second grade students are required to take the STAR reading for PM3. So what are they taking for PM1 and two?
So second grade always takes STAR reading, PM1, PM2, PM3. That is a state requirement. First grade, we actually had our first graders take STAR reading first, PM1 and PM2. And then schools had the option, if a, if a first grader didn't do well on the STAR reading and they needed more information for instructional purposes, they could then administer STAR early literacy to pinpoint better the skills that that student needed for, you know, to fill gaps and move their instruction.
So you're actually trying to pivot them to a different platform from kindergarten to, from PM1, two, to three? Am I, am I getting that right?
Yeah, so the decision was made because, because at PM3, first graders have to take STAR reading. That's a state requirement. And so we wanted to go ahead and give our first graders exposure to that platform as soon as possible, just to give them the practice with it. And again, with that flexibility that the schools could take them back to STAR early literacy as needed to get that, that more accurate data if they needed it on certain students, so.
Okay, I get it now. So you can actually go back and revisit what they're lacking and then get them up to the?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I know you probably have this data, but it's just on here. I know we're looking at PM3, 2023 to 2024, but how did the data look from PM1 to PM2, from PM2 to PM3? Would be interesting to see.
We can absolutely provide.
Okay, because obviously, you know, we've had, and, and Dr. Weisong brings this up all the time. Okay. Because obviously, you know, we've had, and Dr. Weisong brings this up all the time. I mean, you know, you could be proficient in one and two, and it's a bad day when you take that, the one that really counts. And, you know, it's a high-stake test, and, you know, and it is what, you know, fortunately, that's the one that counts. So it'd be interesting to see how, you know, how did students progress? And then maybe what, what took, I mean, I don't know how you're going to find that out, but potentially look at data to see what the difference was between PM two and three? And do we go up and down, you know, based on those numbers?
Absolutely.
These numbers are great, but it'd be interesting to see how the kids did during the year.
We can provide that for you.
I think, that's good.
The next slide you see is more good news. We actually, in ELA, we were, we increased our performance last year in all grade levels, K through ten. So strong ELA performance, keeping pace with the state, again, growing even faster in the state in areas like fourth grade. But again, you know, especially compared to last year, you know, improved performance across the board. And again, I can provide data to the board showing kind of the trajectory over the course of the year. And then again, showing our secondary ELA data, which we had some concerns about at PM two, remember? We talked about time on test. We talked about some strategies that our schools were going to look at to make sure our students persisted more on the test. And I think you see the fruits of some of that labor bearing out here in the PM three data, particularly in areas like, you know, seventh grade and ninth grade and tenth grade. Really strong gains over last year. And a marked improvement in performance, especially as we, you know, we're looking at PM two and kind of analyzing, students may not have been persisting on that test as well as they were able to. And so I think this data is, you know, validating to the additional work our students and teachers put into preparing students for this assessment. So now we'll move on to math. We'll start with math K through two on the STAR as well. You can see here, again, more good news relative to the state. Again, strong primary performance, particularly in kindergarten and mathematics, which is great. You know, if we're starting our kindergartners off on the right foot, that's going to, it's a long-term play, but it's going to translate into just system-wide excellence, kids being better prepared for third grade, just really positive, good news here. So again, you can see kind of gaps relative to the state last year that have been significantly reduced or eliminated between last year and this year in K two mathematics on the STAR.
Why do you think there's such a dip in first grade?
Well, you see an even stronger dip at the state level, and so I have.
That's what I'm saying. It's statewide, not just Manatee, but.
It's hard to know. I'd have to, obviously, we're going to be doing a lot of analysis of this. We'll look at instruction, but we'll also look at other complicating factors, like were there any adjustments made when they did standard setting? And they, you know, made it more difficult to attain proficiency in that grade level or whatever. So we'll, we'll be taking a look at that, but it's definitely an area that stands out.
Part of this is the kindergartners, you know, are going to be our first graders. So that's going to shift, and that's been the whole goal for me, is to get down to the early. And then, yeah, because that's just going to, I think our first grade numbers next year are going to be, are going to be really good based on this.
I hope so. Yeah, we're definitely going to work. In any areas, obviously, where we see opportunities for improvement in analysis, I'll talk about a little at the end of the presentation, but we're obviously going to be working all throughout the summer with our school leaders and teachers, identifying opportunities for growth, creating plans and school improvement plans for next year, putting in strategic data monitoring so that we can kind of target areas we see as opportunities for growth and really go after them for next year as well in a systemic way. Here's our three through seven data. Obviously, Manatee, when you kind of look at us compared to the stated grade levels, we continue to excel in math across the board. As a reminder, math is a little bit more difficult to compare grade level to state data with, because you have different types of acceleration models in mathematics across the state, different cohorts of students taking different grade level exams. And so there's a little bit of variation there. But again, you can see consistently in three through seven. Again, like in K through two, we're doing very well and even better than our peers across the state. And one of the reasons why I said that previous statement is because eighth grade, as you know, is a very, eighth grade math is a very different subject area test, just because middle school, one of the big components of middle school is accelerating students into advanced mathematics, either algebra or geometry, as middle school students. And so the students who are taking the eighth grade state assessment in mathematics are typically your students who have yet not attained proficiency in mathematics up to that point. And so obviously, I think there's some things we're already looking at and how to improve instruction in our eighth grade mathematics courses, because we obviously want this number to be higher, we want this data to be better. But as you'll see here on our next slide, we accelerate a lot of our students into algebra and geometry in middle school here in Manatee County, which is where a lot of our testing data in eighth grade goes to. So you can, to kind of break down all this data, which I know is kind of an overwhelming table, the top table, kind of on the left-hand side, the top two rows are your seventh grade students, state and districts. The next two rows are your eighth grade students in state and district. And you see twenty-two, twenty-three in kind of the left part of that chart. And the percentage of seventh graders who are enrolled in Algebra I or Geometry, and the percentage of eighth graders who are enrolled in Algebra I or Geometry. And so you can see for the state, both of us, the state and us, last year, eleven percent of our students were enrolled in either Algebra or Geometry in seventh grade. But by the time you got to eighth grade, about half of our students in forty-two percent of the states were either enrolled in Algebra or Geometry. If you kind of move over to this year, we have even more students accelerating into Algebra or Geometry. Now fourteen percent of our students in seventh grade and fifty-four percent of our students in eighth grade, which again means more students are taking that Algebra and Geometry test and not taking that eighth grade exam, for context. The bottom part of this table is how those students are performing. We're still missing some state data, obviously, there. But you can see that even though we accelerate a lot of students in middle school, those students typically perform very, very well on those assessments.
I know all this data is charter schools and everything. Do we know, you're not going to know this off the top of your head, but I'd be interested to see how many charter schools are offering acceleration in middle school like we offer it?
We can absolutely provide that data for you.
Yeah, I mean, it'd just be interesting to see, because I think for some students who are going to school that doesn't offer it, that's an advantage for us. And so it'd be interesting to see how many are offering or not.
Absolutely. This is the total Algebra and Geometry results. So this includes all students taking the Algebra I and Geometry assessment. So those would be potentially seventh graders, eighth graders, ninth graders, tenth graders, eleventh graders, depending on where they're taking that Algebra I course and where they're taking that Geometry course. You can see fairly consistent results in Algebra. We're down a little bit in Geometry, so we're definitely going to be doing kind of a root cause analysis of what's going on there and working with our school leaders over summer to action plan around our Geometry data.
Okay, I'm just, I'm a little confused. Slide eleven, it shows that our students accelerated in Algebra. And then we go to the next slide in twelve, and it drops. So that's kind of.
So this data is combined for every student in the district.
Okay, so it's adding even this slide on page ten.
But this is your accelerated seventh graders, your accelerated eighth graders, but also your ninth graders, your tenth graders, your eleventh graders. So it's every student in the district taking that Algebra exam, whether or not they accelerated or not, which is why you see the kind of proficiency rate. That's our overall district proficiency rate. Now, if you look at, you know, when you receive kind of the school-by-school breakdown, you'll definitely see like very different proficiency rates at, you know, middle schools than high schools, because the students who are taking it in middle school have accelerated into mathematics, or accelerated into Algebra, whereas the ones taking it in high school haven't. Now, the next few slides have to do with data that there aren't progress monitors for. These are just end-of-course assessment results, and they are, we progress monitor through them through like district benchmark means, so we kind of have internal ways of tracking data throughout the year. But there is no state common progress monitors throughout the year for these assessments. So the final results are really the only results we get. But it's really nice now, because we get them almost immediately, like we get our FAST results. And so you can see here, our fifth, eighth, and biology, science data, those are the three grade levels in which students take science as an end-of-course assessment. I think we're already doing some things on the curriculum side of the house to start targeting fifth grade and eighth grade science as major growth opportunities for next year. And so we're really going to key into those grades, and our school administrators are already starting to work with us on that. And then, of course, we did see some nice gains in Biology, but I think there's room for growth there as well. So we're going to really be looking at Science next year as an area for kind of some targeted, focused improvement work. And of course, our students take a civics exam in middle school, and they take a US history exam in high school. We had consistent performance in civics, still outpacing the state there. And I think some pretty strong results in US history, again, closing the gap with the state when it comes to US history performance. I think, again, still some instructional work to do there. But I think when you look at the gap last year and this year, and how much we grew in one year's time, I think there's a lot to celebrate in that course as well. So we'll be looking at that, but I think there's some nice initial data coming out of that particular assessment.
Do the AP US History kids take this as well?
In general, yes.
Mr. Jensen, are either of these tests required to graduate, civics or history?
You're required to take US History, but you're not required to pass the exam to graduate.
Okay, so it's just a, it's a reading and a math exam that you have to pass to graduate?
Correct. Tenth grade reading and Algebra I or Geometry.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So just some reminders of the upcoming timeline. FL DOE official reports will be released by the end of June, like I said. However, school grades aren't going to be released until after the State Board of Education finalizes the school and district grading scales, which will probably happen at the July twenty-fourth State Board meeting. They've already presented kind of four different options for grading scales that they could use. They'll have to select one or create a novel one. And then school grades should be released shortly after that. But it's kind of like the analogy we keep going back to, where, you know, we're kicking field goals all game, and then after the game's over and we've started the next game, they're going to tell us like how wide the goalposts are and which ones counted for points and which ones didn't count for points. And so we'll have to make our best guesses at forecasting some of the school grade stuff until it is official at the end of July, beginning of August. And so we'll be obviously waiting for that, as well as our federal index results around that time as well. And so that's just, you know, something really important to keep in mind is that we, well, schools will have already completed a lot of their instructional planning for next year by the time these school grades are released. The good news is that we have amazing school leaders, we have an amazing assessment and research team here, amazing curriculum leaders. They're all going to be digging into this data, using it to inform instruction. The school grades are kind of a summative measure of how we did, but we're going to be looking at the individual scores and data points so that we can prioritize instructional decision-making for next year and move the needle going into next year. We'll also be using that data, we'll be having small group data meetings with principals all summer long, kind of looking at common areas of need across small groups of schools and working with individual groups of principals on what's going to move the needle for them into next year. We're going to be doing a lot of targeted sessions with our school leaders at the Leadership Conference. We'll have a school improvement conference for teachers, as well as school improvement planning work going on. And so just lots of coordinated efforts over the summer in order to improve upon these already good results and move us forward even more next year. With that, I open it up to any questions or comments?
I don't see anybody lit up on Granicus, but thank you very much. Obviously, early stages and exciting to see the gains. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, yeah, come on, I'm single. The ARC Adventures STEM Pilot Program.
All right, good evening, Chair Cho, board members, Dr. Weisong. So I'm here to give you an overview of a pilot program that we tried this year for about five weeks in our Extended Day Enrichment Program, or EDEP. So it was the ARC Adventures. And it aligned to our strategic plan. So under Ready for Life, goal number four, create instructional models centered around real-world skills, civic involvement, financial literacy, and arts integration. Goal six, that continuation, or continued implementation of innovative technology advancements that improve classroom and school environments for exceptional learning. And then under Ready to Grow, goal seven, promote our schools and districts as remaining highly competitive and uniquely designed to produce top-notch graduates, great neighbors, and responsible citizens. So the ARC Adventures, it was titled Building the Future in Three D. It was a partnership between our school district and the ARC Education Initiative. And we, like I said, did it in the Extended Day Enrichment Program, because these modules that the students engaged in were designed specifically for those after-school programs. So the ARC Education Initiative was originally founded in twenty twenty-one by Kathy Wood. She is the CEO of ARC Invest. It's a nonprofit organization. They work to really improve education through technology. And so this program combined technology, engineering, career exploration. And they take this problem-first approach to learning with the students. So it's very engaging and hands-on when they take, when they come in from that perspective. And the goal at the end of the day with this initiative is to provide students with skills and knowledge to think about becoming tomorrow's leaders and what skills they need to become those leaders in the future. You'll see on the slide here, the picture, they take them through this engineering design process, which I'm going to walk you through with some pictures from the students on what they engaged in for each step of that process. If you're not familiar with our Extended Day Enrichment Program, or EDEP, it is one of our after-school options. And the goals from EDEP include building positive self-esteem, helping students take initiative, independence, that problem-solving piece. They are able to express creativity in different ways, safety awareness, sense of security. They, showing self-control, and then also that community involvement piece. And the program activities with EDEP, they really focus on enrichment and special interests. So each school has different enrichment activities that they might focus on depending on the teachers who are teaching and what little niche they might have that they want to bring to the students. So it could be a chess club, it could be something with gardening. So all different kinds of initiatives. And STEM is one of those initiatives that they include a lot of times in the enrichment and special interest clubs. So this ARC initiative supported all of these different goals and activities with EDEP. So with this EDE program, we focused, they focused on fifth graders at four schools, Bashaw, Bay Shore, Freedom, and McNeil. We did a five-week program as a pilot. We started the week of April fifteenth. Each school at minimum worked with the students engaged in these activities two days per week. One of the schools, the teacher actually worked all, I think, four days a week or five days a week. So they actually had the students engaging activities every day of the week. And then the teachers, the four teachers, that they volunteered to take this on. And they got training and job-related support from the ARC initiative across the five weeks. So it was very supportive to the teachers. The students were given this real-world design challenge, and they were asked to build a model of a tiny house that could be used for temporary dwelling for families who need housing. And the students were able to work together in teams. So that was another positive part of this, when we actually went and visited several of the sites and seeing the students in a team engaged and talking to each other and problem-solving and having these really high-level conversations was really exciting to see. So this really set them up to be able to do that. The teams had to create an architectural blueprint. They started with a two-D model, as you can see in the picture. They had these blueprints. these blueprint templates and a 2D model they had to use. And then they actually used those 2D templates to build a physical model following that engineering design process. And then they took that physical 3D model and they used it as a template to create then a 3D virtual model using augmented reality. So basically designing it on a computer and then taking that real world design and using the computer to kind of computer enhance it to show them what it would look like like in real time as a 3D models that they designed through these merge cubes, which I'll talk about in a second. So the first step in the design process, they researched their ideas and they brainstormed solutions. So you can see in the pictures, some of it, the first, some of the first things they started with was building backgrounds. So they, they read an article, they watched a couple of video clips on tiny homes and designing them and what pieces to include and how to think strategically about how to design them to get the, the maximum use of the space. They were given, they had 98 square feet to work with is what they were told. The picture in the middle, they were given the little like grid sheets and each square represented one square foot. So they were able to use that when they were creating their original designs to really build to size, right? So if they knew a couch was three feet long, they would draw the couch in three squares. And if it was two feet wide, they knew it would take up two rows across three squares. So bringing in math as well into this process. They also were able to do research on their own before they started their design process. They were on the computer looking up different ideas for building tiny homes. And one of the things that I, I thought was really amazing, they started, one of the first lessons they did, you can see in that middle picture, he's holding a box that says big ideas and endless possibilities. So they started with a lesson where they, they created these boxes and on the boxes they were, they included on the outside their interests and hobbies, fun facts about themselves, careers that they might find interesting, words to describe themselves, any personal accomplishments that they've had. And then inside the box, they had 20 blank cards. And at the start of each lesson or each activity day, they would go into their box, take out a blank card and they would think about an idea or a problem that they might want, have an idea or way to solve it. And they'd write that idea or problem on one side and on the other side of the card, they would write what their solution would be to solve that problem. So one of the boxes I looked at, the student had talked about trying to keep drinks cold because you know, everybody carries the, the bottles and things, right? The rest that you can keep refilling, but how do you keep them cold? And so the solution was trying to invent a way that somehow ice would automatically, you know, these, these bottles would automatically make ice. So just some very creative ways to really build their thinking, push their thinking and support their ideas. So then in the design process, they would select their best solution and create a model. So then you can see that they took that 2D template and created a 3D model with paper. You can also see the little girl she's holding. They had notebooks that they were keeping notes and track of different things in. And one of the pages, they were exploring their career options and, and how some of these things, what their career interests would be and how that would lead to what they might want to do in the future. And then from there, they had to test and evaluate. So this was at Freedom, the teacher, the students were having a really hard time understanding and visualizing on the little piece of paper how much space, right, is two square feet or three square feet. So she brought in painter's tape and they went out in the hallway and they actually measured and put painter's tape out so that the students could actually start to visualize and figure out how much space is this really? So if I, in my design, say that I want to have, you know, a 65 inch flat screen TV on the wall, right, how much space is that gonna take up? If I want to say I'm gonna have a vanity in my bathroom that has two sinks, how much space is that, am I saying that's gonna take? So you can see in these pictures that the students were having these conversations and they're physically like making these spaces to see how big am I saying it's going to be? I love the one with the little boy laying down to figure out how big that space would be for a bed, right? And then they went into improving the design and communicating the results. So they used an app on the computers and on the tablets called CoSpace to then actually design their tiny home on the computer. So you can see some pictures of some of those, the outside of those designs and the little girl in the middle, she's working on the inside of her design model there. We would, we saw a lot of the students would have their notebooks right there next to them. So all of the steps they had taken leading up to that, they were able to go back into their notebooks and refer to their notes to then create these houses. And then the merge cube, so this then, they were able to take the tablet and different sides of the cubes would show them different viewpoints of their design. So in the tablet, when they would hold it up to this merge cube and we got to see it at one of our visits, it was like they were holding that tiny home in their hand and they could turn the cube and it would turn what they were seeing of their design. So it was an actual 3D model computer enhanced that basically was right there in front of them. So it just brought it more to life for them. It was really, it was really cool to see that. And that was pretty much it. We saw, you know, lots of students engage, lots of conversation. I mean, we were in the room and I don't think they even, I mean, we had, I don't know, about five adults in there with us when we would visit and most of the kids, I don't think even looked at us because they were just so engaged in what they were doing and working with each other. So just a great opportunity.
Thank you. What, and this may be for Dr. Weisong, what's next with it? I mean, are they gonna do some evaluation, ARC, and then come back and suggest some things for us?
Yes, Chairman. Thank you for that. And first of all, thank you to the ARC Education Foundation for, for doing this work with us and to Mrs. Nichols for leadership. Again, we, we got this in the, in the fourth quarter of the year and I just loved that it continues this innovation agenda in Manatee County. But in an after school format that didn't add anything else to the kind of mainstream classroom teachers plates during the school day, particularly as we got ready for test season. So yes, this was, this was a pilot. I think we learned some things on the technology implementation end. And in that it allowed the curriculum writers to see their very thoughtful work in action. So I'm sure they took notes away and we will be scheduling some follow up meetings over the summer to talk about next steps. But I think what this demonstrated, and I intentionally put these two presentations back to back, we know that our students are assessed, right, in a very kind of traditional question answer format. A little technology adaptation in there. But I would argue this work, the, the collaboration, the communication, the problem solving that, that students encounter is, is what's gonna build their skill sets for post-high school, college and careers. So it's great that, that we're able to do that work. So yeah, next steps is we'll, we'll have more conversations and see if we can give this opportunity to more students from our school district in the future.
And this was, another four schools that were listed, but that was it in Manatee County. There was no other private schools, charter schools, et cetera, that had this opportunity for their students?
Correct. It was, we, we worked with teachers who were excited to do this and take this on as one more thing. But they were all very excited to do the work. And I, and I think the teachers learned a lot as well.
Ms. Bray?
Thank you. Where is this nonprofit based out of? Do you know at all?
St. Petersburg.
Okay, I thought I saw that. And, and the schools, how many students were involved?
Freedom and McNeil had larger groups. I think they had about 20 to 25 students participating at any one time. The other two schools, a little bit smaller numbers, I wanna say they had about 12 to 15 students. So.
Significant number. And they're all fifth graders?
They were all fifth graders, correct.
And how long is, that was just a quarter? It was a sample, basically?
Yes, but as Dr. Weisong said, by the time this was presented to us as an opportunity and, and by the time we were able to set up the training for the teachers, we were able to do it for about five weeks. So not quite a full quarter, but it was enough for them to get through the lessons and really engage, you know, take, take on the entire engineering design process from start to finish.
Okay. And, and you said this teachers who got involved with this program volunteered to do this?
We, yes, we went to the, yes, we went to the schools and, you know, we, we wanted to be the Coalition of the Willing, right? So they, you know, the principals reached out to some of their teachers and the four who did it were volunteered and were excited about it. And I think the four teachers regularly during the school day do a lot with STEM and science anyway. So it was something that was near and dear to their hearts. So they were really excited about the opportunity and it was, I think that helped as well because they were so, the teachers were so engaged with it, which helped then the students become so engaged with it too.
Yeah, the program, the picture of the, of the house on page like 11 or whatever reminds me of, of like the Fortnite. So like, these kids probably play this already and build these things already. And yeah, it's pretty cool. It's awesome. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. And thank you to Dr. Weisong for allowing that to happen in the fourth quarter. I know that's, that's late in the year and we're getting some stuff. That's an exciting program. All right, moving us to item number 10, consent items. Superintendent Weisong?
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of the consent agenda for May 28th, 2024.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion as second. So let's go ahead and vote on Granicus. And the consent items pass five to zero. Moving right along to new business, non-consent items. Item number one. Superintendent Weisong?
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of the reclassification of the job description and position of manager security to supervisor security.
I'll second.
We have a motion as second. And Dr. Weisong, you wanna just do a quick, brief explanation?
Yes, thank you, sir. The Board members, the purpose of this reclassification, again, this is an existing job description that does not have a, an employee currently in it, is to mitigate some of the impacts of HB 1473, which was the legislature's 2024 School Safety and Security Bill. That, of course, has been signed by the governor and, and adds important additional requirements and safeguards to ensure that that school districts and, and schools are doing all the right things related to safety and security. The duties of the school safety specialist increase significantly under the legislation. And so in looking at that paired with the expansion of our Evolve screening system to all high schools daily next year, which also means hiring additional guardians, we felt that we needed a supervisor position who will then oversee the lead guardians and the complete group of guardians because our director and school safety specialist, again, will be in schools more day to day, conducting unannounced visits and completing all of those monitoring requirements. So this really just addresses the supervision impacts of, of both the state's change and the change that we've made locally.
Awesome. Thank you. I do not see anyone lit up to speak or comment. Let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the reclassification, the job description, position of manager, security to supervisor. And that passes five to zero. Item number two, Superintendent Weisong?
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of student and adult meal price increases for school year 2024-25.
So moved.
I'll second.
The motion is second. And Dr. Weisong?
Thank you, Chairman. This is a proposed small modest adjustment to our student and adult meal prices. And this recommendation is based on an analysis by our Food and Nutrition Services Department. And we've deemed it necessary at this time for long-term sustainability, both of, of quality and also keeping up with all of the, the various requirements and extras that we do. And our director, Mrs. Toma, is here to answer any questions.
Thank you. I do know Ms. Bray has lit up to speak.
Yep. I know we have a pretty big free and reduced lunch category.
Yes.
So that part's not gonna change, but it was brought to my attention about balanced, balance of people who have not paid their for their lunches.
Yes.
How, how do you do that? I mean, I'm just curious because that was an article. You know, I sent the article to Dr. Weisong because I was asked about it. And I'm like, okay, I don't even know what happens with somebody that cannot pay their bill.
So lots of information out in the media right now about unpaid meal debt. So a couple of things. One is, you know, many of our students qualify for free or reduced meals. Right now, we only have about 14 students that don't either attend a school where meals are free, breakfast and lunch, or they don't qualify by some other means. So it's only about 14,000 paid students that we currently have. So that's a little surprising because we have 21 schools that are community eligibility schools where all students eat free. We also have a large portion of our students that qualify for free meals because they're directly certified, meaning they receive SNAP benefits, TANAP benefits, migrant, homeless. So they are part of another program. So that's another layer of students. And then finally, the group of students where the parents do send in an application and they qualify for free meals. So we do not have a large population of paid students currently. So when it comes to meal balances, that is a difficult topic. So they have grown exponentially nationwide because we had two years of free COVID meals. So once you took that away, people did not feel the need to apply for meal benefits anymore. I wish I had brought it with me. I meant to bring one of our postcards. So we did a mailing last year to every household. Lots of media, lots of information through the district and through other things that we send out, letting people know if you think you qualify, you should apply for meal benefits. Having said that, at the end of the day, there's always a portion of students that potentially would qualify. Their parents may not apply. So we work throughout the entire school year to contact those parents, either by letter, text, email, continuously, almost on a weekly basis. You know, we let them know, here's a link to apply for meal benefits if you can't pay. So there's a lot of different efforts that go on throughout the year. Having said that, there's still some where we have an accumulation of meal balances currently. You know, in the average year prior to COVID, it was about $40,000. Now it's double that. So one of the things that happens is we are able to carry that debt as a child nutrition program until it's deemed uncollectible. So as long as the child is still in our schools, hasn't graduated, we can carry that debt and continue those efforts. Once the student graduates, then we have to pass that debt on to the district, which every year, that's not a tremendous amount, believe it or not. Somewhere in the neighborhood of $8,000, we will move to the district general fund and get reimbursed for that debt because we are not able to pay it out of our funds. So it's a long, ongoing process. Having said that, I know that it came up about donations. So yes, we do accept donations. There's a little bit of a process to that because we can't accept the funds directly into the child nutrition program. They have to be routed through the district. So there's some bureaucracy that goes along with that. The good news is that last year I had requested ESAR funds to pay our student debt because it was allowable and we were able to do that. So this spring, we received the ESAR fund. So we'll be applying that and that should cover almost all of our student debt. Certainly all of the debt where a family is not able to pay. So that's the good news.
I'm real shocked that it's, when you're saying 14,000, is that district students and charter students? Is it?
That's district students.
Okay.
But we also feed 14 of those charter schools. So if we feed the students at the charter school, it does include those, but not all charters. So.
I'm real shocked at that statistics. $80,000, that's a lot.
Yes.
Money. And And simple solution is for a parent to apply.
Yes, that is the simple solution. And when you look at the individual student balances, you know, you'll see maybe mom sends in $25 every two weeks when they get paid, and they have a balance of $8 currently. So a lot of those balances are small. It's kind of like revolving debt where people pay it and, you know, so a large part of that. But there is a number of students who we will never collect those funds. That's just the facts. The parents are either not going to pay, they're not willing, or they can't pay at the end of the day.
Okay.
So.
Bottom line is, if you can pay for it, you need to pay for it.
Yes.
If you cannot, then apply. There's no shame in applying.
No shame in applying.
We can, we have provisions.
Yes.
You apply.
Yes.
Through the state and through the federal.
Yes, and we encourage people, sometimes their financial situation changes. They start the year in one situation, maybe there's a job loss. You know, they can still apply throughout the year if something changes. So, you know, the benefits are there through USDA. So, you know, if, if people qualify, they should go ahead and do that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Great briefing.
I'm lit up to speak.
Sorry. I will say this real quick. As, as a parent who went through not having to pay during COVID and then turning it back on, there's an adjustment. So, you know.
Does he owe?
Yes, yeah. No, I think he's fine.
No, but, but I do know, obviously, you know, when I say, oh, I owe whatever, and it's like, you know, and sometimes, you know, your kids aren't proactive on that.
And we also always say that the federal government doesn't start a program and then take it away, but in this case, they really did do that. You know, so once that word is out there, it is extremely difficult to change that behavior.
Mr. Chairman?
Good evening. I just would like some little more education on the whole program, just to find out how it works. So the, all of the expenses, to include even employee expenses for our food program in the school, is paid through a federal grant. Is that true to say or not?
It's a federal program rather than a grant, just in how the money comes to us. It's based on reimbursement per meal. So that's how we receive our funds.
That includes food, that includes employee, food service workers, that includes equipment to.
Equipment, utilities. We also pay the district something called indirect costs, which are our costs for using payroll, HR and other services. So, yes.
And so then does the money, and this may be Ms. Sellers' question, to come, come through this program to like a separate account? And then when you have to, we have to pay expenses, that money gets transferred into the general account? And then it gets paid out of that account, or it gets paid right out of that?
Right out of the nonprofit food service fund.
Even the employees, even employee expenses, right out of there? Okay.
They know, they know where to find us.
I bet. And then, did I hear you say we have approximately 14,000 students? When you say paid students, that means students that are paying for their meals? Is that what that means?
Yes. And I should have mentioned breakfast is free at all schools for all students. So that's not determined based on income. So that's, that's a great benefit that we offer to all students.
Okay. And I think I heard Ms. Spray ask, the 14,000 number includes charter school students or does not?
Some charter schools. If we provide the meals to the charter school, it includes those students. But if they do their own lunch program, that's separate.
Okay. And we actually have, in some of our kitchens at our traditional public schools, we actually make meals and then transport them over to charter schools. Is that right? And that's probably what you're talking about there, that kind of thing. Okay, great.
Yes.
That's edification for me, is trying to get a better understanding of how this all works, especially the finances of it. And I was surprised to learn that we actually make meals in our traditional public schools and then take them over to charter schools, so.
Yes, in Manatee County, there's not a lot of options for charter schools to, to be able to find meal resources like you might find in a larger urban area. So oftentimes, they come to us, you know, for meal service, so.
And then do they reimburse us with some money somehow, or?
And if there's any costs involved, such as we transport the meals, we charge them a fee for transporting, so it's really based on, on the work level for us.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, I'm glad I had the opportunity.
Superintendent had a question?
I have several. The charter schools are any of the, the $80,000 debts due from charter school students?
No. So the charter school students, so imagine, for example, they're students, they're not all free, they're not a community eligibility school. Any debts that are not paid, we bill them for at the end of the year, and they reimburse us for those debts. Otherwise, that would not make sense for us.
And it's safe to say that at lunchtime, no child goes hungry?
No, so we provide meals to all students, which is something that comes up from time to time with people that want to make donations. They believe that, you know, unless they make the donation, we would not give the student a meal, but we never deny a child a meal. So they are always provided a meal.
And the reason for the increase is not because of the loss of the COVID money? I'm just trying to make sure that people understand.
Sure.
But it's actually a decrease in the amount of federal reimbursement per meal?
Things that happened. As we all know, costs are going up, so food and supply costs are up 19%. I think our labor's been up in the last two years 10%. So we're incurring all these increased costs. At the same time, we do receive paid meal reimbursement for students that are paid. And it went from in '22, '23, I think it was 87 cents, and it's now gone down to 50 cents. So it will go up again by a few pennies once they give us the new reimbursement rates based on the May CPI, but it's not going to jump up to 87 cents anytime soon. So we lost that. We also received about $3 million in federal funds, very similar to ESER, supply chain assistance funds, that have now sunsetted. It's very similar to ESER. So USDA knew they were propping us up with some of these funds and that we were going to have to live off of our savings for a period of time. Lots of bills in Congress right now to increase the reimbursement, lots of different lobbying and efforts to, to help school meal programs. Fortunately, we're in a good financial position overall. We just need to continue to be physically responsible. There are districts that were going off the cliff prior to COVID. They got propped up a little bit, but they're really in dire straits right now.
Has the general fund had to pay money into the, the meal program yet?
No, we have not in this district, but that does happen in other districts, so.
And I believe you told me that other districts are also increasing their rate?
Yes, lots of other districts. Some didn't think they were going to have to, but once you really delve into it, you know that you have to. There's very complicated, something called paid meal equity, that we used to have to send in every year that shows that our paid meals, we cover the expense of our paid meals, and we're not using the reimbursement for any of the free meals to offset that. That started in 2010. Because we have a fund balance, we haven't had to do that, but you always want to use that calculator to make sure that you're charging the correct amount for paid meals. So, you know, those are all the things that go into that type of decision. Thank you. Any other questions?
No. No, thanks, excellent. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, so we had a motion and a second. So now we can vote on the approval of the student and adult meal price increase for 23, 24, or excuse me, 24, 25 school year. And that passes five to zero. Moving on to item number three in new business, non-consent, Superintendent Weisong?
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval to purchase a Scribbles software subscription, contract number 25-0044-RG, estimated at $501,031 over a five-year period.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. And if you just want to do a brief description of this item?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. So this is a renewal purchase of existing software. There are two components. Scrib Order handles all of our transcript requests for students who are graduating or graduated. And then Scrib Folders is the system that holds all of our digital student records. You received a presentation regarding Project Digitize, I believe, a couple of workshops ago. And so this is the technology that allowed our IT team to scan all of those student records and maintain them for quick access when needed. This agreement that Mr. Hanson and team negotiated, again, is a, a five-year deal, level pricing for the first two years, a nominal increase for the next three, and then an option for up to five one-year renewals at that same year-five price. So it's, it's an opportunity to lock in some long-term savings. There is a standard termination clause in the contract should a, you know, the service level change or if a less expensive technology emerges in the future. So we view this as a, a good long-term opportunity for the district.
Thank you. If only they had a machine that would just do all the scanning and stuff for you, not all the man-hours of what Mr. Hanson's group did. Ms. Spray, you're lit up to speak?
Yep. I have a couple of questions. You said the Scrib Order is for, come on down, Mr. Hanson. Is for storing transcripts. So when a student goes off to school, college or whatever, how do they get their records? Through us or through this platform?
Couple of different opportunities. We also, we also send in, on our website, we provide and recommend to all of our students, active students, those graduating, to send that transcript through the faster system, and that's at no cost. We also, when students 11th and 12th grades, where we usually see the requests come from, schools have the ability to offer a coupon code to all of our active students, and that coupon code allows them a free transcript as well. We process through Scrib Order, what you mentioned earlier. Scrib Order is the mechanism for our alumni students. So very similar to when you have a student who's graduated college, they use the system, you go and ask for your transcripts to be sent to an employer for job employment or maybe continuing education. Oftentimes, they use various platforms as well, and you pay a, a fee. And that's where Scrib Order comes into. So we use Scrib Order for student records that we have to maintain for the lifetime of those records. And we also, for our alumni records, for students who have already graduated and left the system and years later want a transcript, they use Scrib Order. Scrib Order is actually, there's no fee for Scrib Order. That's what we discussed last week. That generates about an average of $36,000 of revenue, and we turn and use that revenue to buy supplies for our schools, so we don't have to have a supply budget.
You said they charge a fee?
There is a, there is a service fee.
Right.
There's about 11,000 school districts across the country that use Scrib. And there is a service charge fee, and then we have a, a fee schedule that's on our website under property records, and we add a nominal fee to that. And that's where we get that revenue from.
Okay, so I need, what I want to understand is, we have Scribble over here, and then we have our records here. Are they the same, one and the same?
There are multiple platforms. It's one centralized system, it all works cohesively together. Scrib Order is what we utilize for the transfer of, of transcript. We also use Scrib Transfer, Scrib Order, to securely transfer. We're required by statute to transfer between districts. When a student leaves our district, we have to transfer that file within a certain number of days. And we use the Scrib, Scrib Transfer process or product to transfer that record securely to meet that requirement.
So we use different platforms. One is this, and then?
Scrib Order, Scrib Transfer, and then Scrib Online and Scrib Folder. So what we mentioned that during the, during the workshop, Scrib Folders is where our active students currently enrolled in the school district of Manatee County, that's where the Active Cume Folder, so the traditional cumulative folder that used to be in the vault, those for all of our active students go into what's called Scrib Folders. And then obviously, you know, today, unlike 15, 20 years ago, we have less and less, less paper that are being generated, but we still have some processes and some records that accumulate, and that's where our schools scan into Scrib Folders. Scrib Online is where we put all of our act, inactive student records and our inactive and active employee records, personnel files.
Right. Okay, so. We know how technology changes.
Absolutely, every day.
And that's, that's what I'm afraid of, to be honest with you. I'm just afraid of, it's a five-year contract, and I understand we have the option to take out, but they've got all, there's all of our data out there. You're talking about employee records as well. From now to how far back? Forever? What would happen with all of our data if something happened to this company? That's one of my concerns for a five-year term. This company, by the way, to the rest of the board, and that's why I pulled it, I wanted to talk to the rest of the board. This company was founded in 2010, and it's a privately owned business. And there are, from what I could see, 42 employees and executive team of eight. And they're in North Carolina. I didn't see anything bad. It's just more, okay, what would happen with all of our data if this company went out of business? That's my big fear with a five-year term, and they've got all of our data. I mean, just like Google Cloud, it just scares me a little bit, the cybersecurity part of it.
Sure, they go through the same vendor risk assessment process, no different than our student information system, which is also loaded, so our active student information system, which is Focus, is in the cloud. The data is ours. If we were to terminate the agreement or something unforeseeable happened to the company, that data is in AWS cloud, and that data is ours. It's backed up every single night, it's duplicated across multiple data centers, and those data and those files are ours. So no different, we send data to every curriculum application, the majority, 85% of our applications are in the cloud today. But that data, they go through a vendor risk assessment process, they are required to provide SOC report as well. So I, I think from that same point, to your point, does technology change every day? I don't have a crystal ball to know when acquisitions happen, but I think from a pricing perspective, the technology, they're continuing to evolve their product, no different than our SIS provider or any other providers. So as the superintendent mentioned, I think there's safeguards in place there, that if we had to move the data, we're prepared to do that, if, if and when that day comes.
Okay, when you said data center, what do you mean by a data center? You're just talking about software, hardware?
So this is cloud-hosted, so ultimately, it resides in multiple data centers across the United States.
Okay.
And that data is backed up, and that's part of our agreement.
Okay.
The SOC report, do you get that annually?
We do, we, we request it annually. Depending on when the SOC report timing hits, because of the process and length of time of the SOC report, sometimes it can go between one and two years, depending on when it hits, based on their audit. It's very similar to ours.
Do you make sure that they go through penetration testing?
We do. Well, that's part of, they answer a cybersecurity questionnaire, and they have to, they have to respond to those, and then we follow up if there's any concerns.
And there, my understanding is that there's some kind of evaluation tool out there regarding vendors that indicate how secure they are? Am I, am I imagining that?
We, we have, I mean, there's, there's a number of things that we run, that we, we can publicly run against a known site, but we need to, you know, we need to obviously disclose that. You don't want, just like we wouldn't want somebody to run tools against our website unknowingly. So there is a vendor risk score that comes out of, and then we keep track of, and they have to provide us information related to security updates and whether they're keeping those. And if we have concerns, if they come up through that audit, we reach out to them. We have a staff member dedicating our data center that's responsible for doing that and communicating with me, and then we, we, we have discussions with those vendors.
I, I know that you've got.
Great question.
You've got IT, you know.
Great question.
Got it locked, so thank you.
That's all I had, I just, just scared of the five-year terms, because I know how technology changes so fast.
Well, I think the takeaway, as the superintendent mentioned, that, you know, at any time that we feel there's a service degradation, then, you know, we have the opportunity to transition away from and, and implement a new product if, if there is a degradation of service.
Do you, do people reach out to you for services like this? I mean, how long have we had this?
We started, we started in 2021.
Okay.
And as I stated at the workshop, the. And as I stated at the workshop, the scanning of student records or employee records, alumni records, not active students, is, has been done in the state of Florida for 20 years. Not many districts have accomplished the scanning of the active student record like we accomplished in the last 18 months. There are some districts that certainly have done it in the state of Florida. There are a number of districts that are moving to it. But this particular provider is, is kind of a K-12 niche product. This is what they specialize in for K-12 and educational systems. And we felt that was very valuable for what we were embarking on.
Okay.
They have 11,000 districts over there?
There's 11,000 districts that uses a number of different products. They have a number, probably 10 or 12 products, I think, that you can see in that scrip order. They list all their products. We're not using all of them. But one of the most, you know, widely used is that scrip order, scrip transfer, especially in the Florida, because in the state of Florida, we've got some new statutes where we're required to transfer certain records within a certain number of days. So we use that system based on request. We use that system for legal requests of legal documentation for records that we get every day, and that's, that's some of that 23,000 orders that we've processed just in the last couple of years.
It's 11,000 schools.
Right. 11,000 schools, 300 districts.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, I don't see anyone else led up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, bye-bye.
So we've got our motion and a second. Finished discussions, go ahead and vote on the approval to purchase scribbles software subscription, estimated at 501,000 over the five years. And?
I'm just gonna have to do no, just because I'm scared of the tech.
That passes four to one with Member Bray as the no. Moving on to item number 14, new business, no superintendent recommendation. First item, board, we have is the approval of the reappointment of Member Bernard Wagner to Audit Committee.
Sub moved.
We have a motion.
A second.
We have a second. And Ms., Ms. Foreman, do you have anything to add on this one?
No, Mr. Wagner is an existing member of the Audit Committee for the last three years, and?
He wants more.
He's willing to take more, yeah, yeah. And we, we really appreciate it.
Yeah.
So this will be a three-year term again, we know?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, I don't see any members led up to speak, so let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the reappointment of Member Bernard Wagner to the Audit Committee for another term of three years. That passes five to zero. Next item under new business with no superintendent recommendation is the approval of the internal audit reports, including the Transportation Department Audit Report and the Position Control Post Audit Report or the PAR Report that we received in our, not last workshop, but the workshop before that, from the Audit Committee.
Oh, yeah.
Sub moved.
A second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion, board members on this? I know they reported, so I think we're good. All right, let's go ahead and vote on the approval of these audit reports. All right, that passes five to zero. Moving on to our updates, instructional update? Since you didn't have enough today.
This one brief. Church of Board Members, Superintendent Weisong. We had a wonderful, successful end of the school year, but that doesn't mean learning is stopping on our campuses because next week we start summer learning programs. We have, our programs start on Monday, June 3rd for students, but professional learning for our instructional staff members actually begins this week, Thursday and Friday. We have, as you saw in an earlier board presentation in the spring, just so many different summer options for students and families, including third-grade summer reading camp, our Title I camp for K-2 students, extended school year, VPK, pre-K summer bridge, Camp Creator focused on STEM, migrant camp K-8, our Title I bridge programs for middle and high school students entering sixth and ninth grade, rapid recovery for high school and middle school credit, career explorations at MTC, our Guy Harvey Experience, our Smarten Up Camp, which is an arts camp, visual and performing arts camps around the district, and driver's ed as well. So just a lot happening in our school district, even after the end of the formal school year.
At the end of the bell, it just starts.
Doesn't stop. Thank you very much. And operations, Mr. Rinaldi.
Good evening, Chairman Choate, Board Members, Dr. Weisong. Give you just a kind of brief update, human resources. We have completed all instructional job fair hiring from the spring fair that was held on 4/20 at Manatee Technical College. That has reduced the number of teaching openings for next year to around 60 instructional vacancies, and that's across the district. So as a result, that doesn't mean that we're done recruiting. We have a virtual brazen teacher job fair coming Thursday, May 30th, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. In addition to that, our next operational job fair is going to be June 20th, and that's going to be a face-to-face job fair at the Wakeland Center from 9:00 AM till noon. So we're continuing to recruit and continuing to staff. Transportation Services, brief, they wanted to make sure to thank the board for coming out and attending the early morning bus wave. It was really appreciated by the drivers and by the attendants. They always appreciate that. But they started their dry runs this morning for summer school, so no sleep for them. They're moving forward in summer school, getting our dry runs done. Food Service, today is the first day of the Food and Nutrition Services Summer Food Program to begin at schools and community locations throughout the county. Meals will be provided at all SDMC summer school programs and camps, as well as 35 community locations, including 16 mobile stops. So they've got a busy summer, and new this year is a mobile stop at Rossi Park, and breakfast will be served at three other mobile stops as well. Please visit the district website for summer break spot program, details, location, and hours. I tried to use the interactive map, but it was real tough, so. But it is there graphically as well, so it outlines all the programs. And with that, from the standpoint of the operational team, I'd like to thank you all for your support this school year, and we're looking forward to the summer and getting a lot of work done over the summer and starting next school year. Once again, thank you.
Mr. Tatum had a question?
Couple of questions, Mr. Rinaldi. How do we fund those summer food programs? I'm just curious.
It's a, it's through, the majority of those are through the state, but federal-funded as well and through the state.
So it comes from the same funding streams like we talked about earlier? Okay, great. And then I just want to make sure, I understood what you said a little earlier. Currently, if things were not to change, we have 60 teacher vacancies, but we're also recruiting over the summer and?
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, great. And how many?
There'll be some movement as well, and as we look at enrollment levels and do all that, that'll open up other positions as well.
And off the top of your head, do you know almost exactly how many teacher positions we have in Manatee?
No, I do not, but?
Maybe proxy? I keep throwing around, okay. I keep throwing around the number 3,000. I just want to make sure I'm at least in the ballpark. How many teachers you got? 3,000, so, okay, I'm in the ballpark. Good enough for government work, as we say, right? That's all I have. Thank you.
Legal update. Mr. Dai, anything?
Legal's under control.
Good. Like to hear. Superintendent?
Thank you, Chairman. Board Members, tonight's consent agenda contained 23 items. We appreciate your approval of those items so that we can continue the routine business of the district. Lots of contracts there being renewed so that we can be ready for August 12. I want to highlight a couple of items. First of all, on the HR agenda, at the last board meeting, you approved the recommendation for an executive principal job description as a opportunity for very high-performing, battle-tested, awesome principals to take next steps in their careers. And tonight, you approved the elevation of Dr. Haley Rio, who is the principal at Harvey, and the great news is she's going to stay at Harvey, but will also be the planning and founding principal for the North Middle School. And that work will center on duplicating the incredible culture that's been built at Harvey Elementary and extending that culture to what we think will be a, potentially a two-campus K-8. So we're excited for Dr. Rio. And then also elevating Todd Richardson, who is the principal at Gullett Elementary, and will be the principal at Gullett Elementary next year, but will also be the planning and founding principal for the East K-8. He will transition over full-time to the Cade at some point mid-next year. But again, that allows us to bring two outstanding principals to the table for all of the planning that needs to occur. Our construction services team and our contractors have the facility work and the construction work well underway on those two sites, and now we kind of enter the enrollment and educational planning phase this summer. And so it'd be great to have Dr. Rio and Mr. Richardson and their talents at the table as we plan those campuses while they continue to lead at their current schools. Also want to highlight your approval of nearly $1.375 million in grant applications. That is to continue our 21st century community learning centers at seven schools. Again, that provides no-cost after-school programming at those sites that is education-focused, but also provides for some academic enrichment opportunities for students and board members because we love those programs so much. At the next board meeting, we'll be bringing you permission, we'll be bringing you a request to give us permission to submit for a couple of additional schools as new projects to the federal government. So we're excited about all of that. I had a great time with all of you at our seven high school graduations. I'll let you all talk about that in your comments, but I truly enjoyed my first graduations in Manatee. Thank you to our principals and our graduation coordinators and all of our student speakers. They were, they were all awesome, and I enjoyed it very much. Other highlights from my calendar the last two weeks. Had the opportunity to do a year-end review at Bradenton-Kowanus last week. Chair Choate joined me for that and had a great opportunity to give some updates to that group and answer their questions. Had the opportunity last week to visit McNeil Elementary's fifth-grade graduation and award ceremony and surprised a student there who scored perfect scores on the English Language Arts, Math, and Science, all three assessments, perfect scores, and surprised him with a superintendent's coin of excellence along with some recognition from McNeil. So that was a lot of fun. And then finally, Mr. Rinaldi, Mr. D'Amico and I paid a visit to Sheriff Wells and some members of his leadership team last week just to finalize some of our safety and security plans for the next school year, including ensuring that we have a law enforcement officer on every secondary and K-8 campus next year, in addition to, again, the expansion of the Guardian program. And we appreciate the sheriff and his leadership team for the priority that they give to school safety and security. Finally, as Mr. Jensen and Mr. Rinaldi both mentioned, we are already well into planning for 24-25. Our teachers worked their last contract day today, and of course, many of them are right back here for summer programming and professional learning, and hopefully are getting a little bit of time with their families as well. I do want to mention that in addition to all the regular operational planning, it is definitely a focus this summer on instructional leadership. We'll be meeting as a district leadership team with each of our high school principals focused on lessons learned from the year around graduation and what we can do to better support students who need a little extra support to get to the finish line and also with their college and career planning. And then we'll be meeting in small groups with all of our principals to share best practices around our learning gains data, and particularly listening to some of our principals who saw significant growth. And again, we, we've got projections, and we think we'll have some great stories to tell once the data come out officially from DOE. But we'll be ensuring that we're documenting all of our lessons learned from this past year and sharing best practices among our principals. So all of that work will be happening in June and early July as we make our instructional plans for next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Board comments, Messenger, Tatum, Foreman, Bray, myself. Ms. Messenger, lead off.
I don't have much to add other than I just want to say thank you, thank you to the principals, the teachers, food service, custodial, transportation, all the other school staff, the pairs, the teacher aides, the financial team, the operations teams, because it takes everybody to have a great school year. And so I don't want to lose sight of that. It takes every single person working together to make it as good as it did, and I just want to say thank you to everybody, and that's it. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Tatum?
Okay, so I was fortunate enough to go to all the graduations, and that was good, and shook maybe, what, 6,000 hands, 7,000?
3,500.
Is it 3,500? Okay. Well, everybody had two hands, so if you double them, then, there you go, something like that.
You shook both of their hands.
Some I did, yeah. But that was, that was good, so. Congratulations, everybody pulled that off and went smoothly. I didn't see any hiccups, so a lot of people are behind the scenes making that happen. So congratulations to them. And then I was able to attend some Memorial Day ceremonies over the weekend and a parade. And something struck me, I just actually did a little research here. It says here there are about 200,000 World War II vets that are still alive. And so if you have an opportunity to meet these guys and talk to them, I can imagine this is what it felt like when the World War I vets finally, you know, passed on and there are no more of them left. So there's a gentleman, there are a couple of them in our community. One of his name, his name is John Skeen. He's a great American. He fought in the Battle of the Bulge, so someone would like to get with him. He, he likes to talk to people. He comes to events and things like that. So they're out there, but go talk to them now because within a few years, they won't be around anymore in their story. There's actually a gentleman I met who is going around filming these guys. He's a young guy. He's an entrepreneur, and he's actually filming all their stories to make sure we get them on tape. But if you have a chance to meet Mr. Skeen or some of the other World War II vets, do it because they're not going to be around for much longer. And then my safety tip, in the Air Force, we call this the Hundred Days of Summer between Memorial Day and Labor Day. And if you hear people say something like this, you know, "Hold my adult beverage and watch this," something bad's probably going to happen, okay? So, so think to yourself, if you hear those words, try and stop whatever's going to happen after that because it usually is something bad. So that's my safety tip for the day, and those are the end of my board comments. Thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Foreman?
I don't know many people who say, "Hold my adult beverage," but I just?
Another word.
Doesn't, doesn't have a ring to it.
That's right.
Yeah, so, but it's a good tip. Again, I really, really enjoyed the graduations, and it did go off very well. And it really wasn't that hot, which was nice. So we were, we were fortunate on that and the weather. And we all bonded in our meals between, between graduations, but, so it was good. And then next week, we're going to bond some more at the Florida School Board Association Conference that's coming up, so. I want to send a shout-out to Southeast High School student Savannah Anderson, who qualified for the National Debate Tournament and Speech and Debate Tournament. And over the weekend, they had it in Chicago, and she placed in the semis, semifinals in Student Congress. And that is no small, you know, feat. It's, it's, it's really a big deal to go to, go to, go to national. And I think they all did it on two hours of sleep because their plane got delayed. They got in 3:00 in the morning, and there was, they're across from Grant Park, and there's concerts, and so, yeah. So it was, it was a rugged, but she did very well in spite of it, so. Congratulations, and that's all I have.
Awesome. Thank you. Ms. Bray?
Okay. Graduation was wonderful. This year, we only had one student that had heels that were not acceptable. Big improvement over last year. No tears. There were no tears this time. That was so nice. A lot of smiles. What's cool about that is when you go to the schools and you see the students and you talk to the ones in tennis or ones on the football field, they go up there and they recognize you. "Hey, Ms. Bray." It was kind of the reward, you know? It was kind of the reward, you know? And Mr. Tatum, I volunteer quite frequently, it felt. And one of the students, ESE students, graduated. And when he came through the line, he recognized us, and he was just so, filled with so much joy. And it made me feel very touched that he remembered us from there, so that was a good thing. We do also have the Stand Up For Children Gala coming up on Saturday. Any of you signed up for that? Okay. I think that the, yeah, we are doing a conference too next week. But also graduation season's not over until we do the summer graduation at Southeast. And then we have another graduation, two ceremonies at MTC on the 26th and 27th. That's the end of the month. But then you start over again, so when the bell rings, it's not done. I want to say congratulations to all of the people who retired. We have Karen, 20 years. Patricia's 21 years. Financial aid coordinator, that's probably here in this building. Principal at Johnson. What a joy it is to visit him at that school. He was just always energetic. So 30 years of service there. Teachers aide at Bayshore, 22 years, 25 years for Kathy at Palmetto High. 35 years for fourth-grade teacher at Braden River. There's just so many that we are, we need to recognize. Third-grade teacher, Jean Howard at Williams, 30 years. 32 for Jane Johnson, Buffalo Creek. There's a whole lot of people that are leaving our district, and I just wanted to say thank you to all of them for all the service that they've committed to us for almost 35 years. Pamela Woodson from King Middle. That's a lifetime to some people. So I just wanted to recognize a lot of those. Custodian, Russell Calhoun from Bayshore High, 33 years. That's a commitment. Register from Freedom for 24 years, Redena. I just want to always recognize those people at the end of our board work, board meetings, because that's what does the hard work out there. That's who does it. And we have got a whole line of people coming on board to replace them. So I want to say welcome aboard. July 1st will be here before you know it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks. Just to reiterate what everybody said, I thought graduation was great. Thank you to the staff for this meeting, preparing for this meeting, and obviously throughout the whole school year. And you turn around, and now you get to prepare for next year right now. So appreciate all the work, everybody out there. You know, just because teachers are off, they typically will still be doing something over the summer. So thank you very much. Congratulations to Parish Community Girl Softball, won state championship last week. So back-to-back. So one more, and they got a dynasty. And I'll say this, too, as we end the school year and as parents are moving to another school year, I believe in parental choice and school choice. And there's a lot of schools out there to choose from, whether it be our traditional public charter and private. But I do honestly think that the school district of Manatee County is the best option for your child. And I really do believe that we've got programs and innovative programs and things happening in our schools that other schools just can't offer. And I'm really excited about the next school year and where we're going. Dr. Weisong, congratulations on your first year officially, you know, as far as the school year. You've got another month before you actually go to July 1st. But it's been smooth, knock on wood, and I really appreciate it. And we'll see you all next week for FSBA. Until then.
Real quick, Ms. D'Amico, Ms. Cox always do a great job. And then finally, the people back behind the wall there, wherever you are, making it all work. It always works out well. You know, you see yourself, and the videos always work, so thanks to them. I don't think they ever get a shout-out, so.
Ms. TV, thank you very much.
Yes, that's it.
All right, we are adjourned.